Yeah. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our City of Cupertino Council meeting. It's a little after 6:45, and the regular meeting is about to start. The meeting has been called to order. If you can stand, please do so, and we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Rule call, please.
Councilmember Chow?
Here.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Wei?
Here.
Vice Mayor Fruein?
Here.
Mayor Mohan?
Here.
You get all my stuff. Mr. City Attorney, is there a closed session report?
Nothing to report, Mayor.
Okay. All right. There are two ceremonial items. Should we do the moment of silence? Before we start, I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge the horrific accident that happened on April 27th at about 6:30, where four children were hit by a truck. We subsequently heard that one of the children passed away. So we cannot even imagine what the parents and family are going through this, going through this unimaginable tragedy. So let's just take a moment of silence and keep everyone in our thoughts. Thank you. We have two ceremonial items today. The first one is recognition of May as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. There is no one in attendance, so I will make a verbal recognition to honor this event. May is recognized as an Asian American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, which celebrates the cultures, accomplishments, and histories of Americans hailing from across the Asian continent and from the Pacific Islands of Melanesia, Micronesia, and Polynesia. In 1992, May was established as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month to commemorate two significant milestones. First, the nation's first Japanese immigrants arrived on May 7th, 1843. And second, the Chinese workers played an instrumental role in building the first transcontinental railroad, which was completed on May 10th, 1869. In 2021, President Joe Biden signed a proclamation to include Native Hawaiians in this group. As such, the City of Cupertino is issuing a proclamation to act to change national 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization working to address bullying included in the Asian American and Pacific Islander communities. As is shown in Cupertino, with its diversity and collaboration at the leadership table, we can overcome monumental challenges and accomplish any ambitious goal. Together, let's celebrate the vibrancy and contributions of the AAPI community that enrich our city and beyond. Did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I'd like to acknowledge that this Saturday, there will be an AAPI cultural festival right here in the City Hall Plaza. This is the second year that this volunteer group have helped organize this event. Do we know what time? I think it's about maybe 12:02, 12:03. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. We're also recognizing May as Affordable Housing Month. And it is, May is again celebrated as Affordable Housing Month, a time when attention is drawn to the importance of ensuring accessible housing options for all. Emily Ann Ramos, Preservation and Protection Associate with SV at Home, will receive the proclamation and say a few words.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. My name is Emily Ann Ramos, and on behalf of SV at Home, thank you so much for having Affordable Housing Month proclamation. This is the time to bring people together so that we could all transform our communities into more affordable and accessible places to live. Our theme for this year's Affordable Housing Month is "For Us, For You, For All", recognizing that our well-being is tied to the well-being of our neighbors. Across the nine-county Bay Area, a broad coalition is working to place a regional housing bond on the ballot in November. As part of the region-wide coalition here in Santa Clara County, SV at Home and Working Partnerships USA are spearheading the effort to introduce this transformational measure, which could raise as much as $20 billion for affordable housing. We invite you to join us in imagining a future of stable neighborhoods for our communities, moving us past the concept of housing as a human right to a vision of healing and restoration for us, for you, and for all. The future we envision for the Bay Area begins with us. We lift up local partner programming to demonstrate the breadth and power of our collective work in Santa Clara County's affordable housing ecosystem. The future we envision for the Bay Area begins with us. Please be sure to check out our entire calendar events that our partners are hosting at svathome.org. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Emily. Should we all go ahead and take a picture with Emily? So this is a proclamation that the city is issuing to Emily Ramos in celebration of the Affordable Housing Month. It's a very long proclamation, so I won't read it other than to say congratulations, and this is something we all want to do, and I'm glad we are doing it. Okay. Madam City Manager, are there any postponements and orders for the day?
No, Mayor.
All right, let's move on to oral communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the council and not on the agenda of a discussion, including informational items. The total time for oral communications will ordinarily be limited to one hour, and individual speakers will be limited to three minutes today. Do we have any speakers, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Mayor, I have one group of five people wishing to consolidate their time for 10 minutes.
Yes, please.
And I have two additional speaker cards, and I see one hand raised on Zoom.
Excellent. Okay. Let's have the first group.
Okay, very good. So first, we have Alisa Sakis, Sharon Fong, Jean Gasparini, Beth Wickman, Dina Sakis, and Susan Satya, and Fran Ellis.
And Gary McHugh.
Gary McHugh.
I think I've got everyone's name on it.
Fran Ellis, yes. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Mohan, City Council and City staff. My name's Alisa Sakis, and I'm the president of Cupertino Toyokawa Sister Cities Incorporated, CTSC. And we are the organizers of the annual Cupertino Cherry Blossom Festival that was held April 27th and 28th. This year marked our 40th year organizing the festival and we're in our 45th year as a sister city. We are here to express our tremendous gratitude to the city for sponsoring the Cupertino Cherry Blossom Festival. This festival is not possible without the sponsorship and all the city support that we receive. The Cherry Blossom Festival is CTSC's sole fundraiser, supporting all of our programming related to Cupertino's sister-city relationship with Toyokawa, Japan. Today, I want to emphasize three benefits of our festival. The Cherry Blossom Festival has a positive reputation that reflects well on the City of Cupertino. It provides benefits to the community, and it provides benefits to businesses and organizations in our community. So first, benefiting the public image of the city. This festival honors one of Cupertino's four sister cities and is indistinguishable from an event being organized by the city for the community. It's an award-winning festival that contributes to a positive reputation in our city. Now in its 40th year, the festival's popularity has continued to grow, garnering coverage in the New York Times California edition and in making the front page of the Cupertino Courier this year as well. The festival provides an opportunity for a visit of the Council General of Japan, and it's also an opportunity for our elected officials to visit and address their constituency in Cupertino. Secondly, in benefiting the community, the Cherry Blossom Festival is a free, family-friendly event offering community exposure to some 45 performing arts and special interest groups. It is unique in its offering of hands-on cultural activities. The community benefits from cross-cultural exposure to Japanese arts, entertainment, and activities. And I'll give just two examples. If one were to go to Chaban, tourists can pay $20 or more to dress up in a kimono and have their photograph taken. This year, CTSC offered a dress-up selfie station at no charge with approximately 750 people participating. CTSC also offered one-on-one guided, hands-on experiences for festival-goers to try Japanese stamp art and sumiye brush painting free of charge, serving about 300 people when we ran out of materials. Additionally, a professional Japanese calligraphy artist provided multiple stations throughout the weekend, and that was also free of charge. Thirdly, in benefiting other businesses and organizations in our community, the Cherry Blossom Festival brings business and visibility to Cupertino, allowing artists to reach new audiences within our city. We attract audiences from San Francisco down to Watsonville, and some of our vendors travel from as far away as Los Angeles. The festival provides a business opportunity for many small cottage-type artisan and food vendors to sell their wares, and more than 100 arts and craft booths filed temporary business licenses to do business in Cupertino that weekend. Other nonprofit groups and student clubs benefit from participation, using the festival as a platform for their fundraising and gaining visibility in the community. We also provide volunteer opportunities within the community, reaching out to schools, Scouts of America, and other service groups. In addition, the Cupertino Historical Society benefited from our festival. They enjoyed 2,000 visitors who might not have otherwise visited their museum. Similarly, the Wafu Ikebana Club had 2,100 visitors per day coming to see their flower arrangements. In closing, the Cupertino Cherry Blossom Festival represents a significant symbiotic relationship among the city, CTSC, and a host of performers, vendors, artists, nonprofits, volunteers, and the community. So thank you once again for this opportunity, for a mutually beneficial opportunity to hold our 40th Cherry Blossom Festival. We look forward to your continued support as we, CTSC, serve the city as the custodians of Cupertino's sister-city relationship with Toyokawa, Japan. Thank you very much. And we have some cookies to share with you. I'll give them to Mayor Mohan, and she can share it with the rest of you. But thank you very, very much for your support. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, Alisa.
Thank you. And next, we have Anika Mukherjee. I apologize if I messed up your name, followed by Brooke Ezit, followed by Rhoda Frye.
Okay. So hello, councilmembers. My name is Anika Mukherjee. I am a 10th grader at Cupertino High School, a teen commissioner for the City of Cupertino. And for the past two years, I have also served as the lead student intern for the Cupertino Toyokawa Sister Cities Organization. I have actively participated in the planning and organization of the annual Cherry Blossom Festival. This past year, I had the responsibility and pleasure of organizing the Kids' Own area of the Cherry Blossom Festival to ensure that we had a variety of interactive activities for children offered by youth organizations. As the Kids' Own lead, I conducted extensive outreach with over 40 student organizations, beginning in December. I was able to secure the participation of around 15 organizations and coordinated with them to plan the various activities for children and families. During the days of the festival, I helped set up the 20 Kids' Own booths, checked up on the organizations periodically, and ensured that they had no questions, and also helped them log their volunteer hours. The booths included fun activities like origami, fingerprinting, bracelet-making, and many more, along with learning opportunities for students such as mental health strategies, trivia, tips about safe swimming practices, and education about rare diseases. During the festival, the Kids' Own attracted hundreds of families, students, young children, and even adults. For me, this was an incredibly rewarding experience, and it was also rewarding for the participating student organizations, who mentioned that the Cupertino Cherry Blossom Festival was their first and/or largest event that their organization had ever participated in. And the exposure and support they received was unmatched. Organizations were able to spread their message and goals to the larger Bay Area community and even fundraise by selling crafts and small merchandise. In that sense, the Kids' Own was a reflection of the Cherry Blossom Festival, which is a celebration for the community, by the community. I am honored that I could be part of the Cupertino Toyokawa Sister Cities Committee, and I was supported namely by Ms. Sharon Fong and Ms. Alisa Sakis, who worked tirelessly to make this event a booming success. This experience has taught me invaluable lessons about community connectedness, cultural celebration, and the power of collaboration, and also gave me a valuable behind-the-scenes insight as to how such large, widespread community celebrations occur. I am grateful for this experience, and I look forward to continuing to contribute to both the City of Cupertino and Cupertino Toyokawa Sister Cities. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anika. Next, we have Brooke Ezit, followed by Rhoda Frye. And then we have one hand raised virtually. Welcome, Brooke.
Good evening. I'm going to be reading an abbreviated version of a letter to the editor for Spotlight. Cupertino is in the middle of a severe, long-term financial crisis due to the fiscal mismanagement at the highest levels of city government, a crisis that is not solely due to the loss of Apple's sales revenue. Unclear what Councilmember Fruein is thinking here, pursuing spending nearly $100 million on an unfunded park project at the same time the city is busy cutting essential services and planning to allow its streets and sidewalks to deteriorate. Does Mr. Fruein believe that money falls from the sky or grows on trees since he has no strategy for how to pay for this? Grants for a project like this tend to be in the neighborhood of $1 million, if obtainable at all. Putting Cupertino on the road to insolvency and bankruptcy is not a path that the City Council should take. We need more than platitudes, backstabbing, and mindless babbling. We need a detailed financial analysis of how to fund these pie-in-the-sky projects. We must not listen to people who do not understand the big picture and have no concept of how things that would be nice to have if we were rich are actually paid for. If there is truly a demand by people for pickleball courts, then we need to find a physically sound way of providing these facilities. A pickleball court typically costs between $30,000 and $90,000 to build. The City of Santa Clara converted two tennis courts to pickleball courts at very little cost and charges residents $8 an hour and non-residents $10 an hour. Last November, Morgan Hill awarded $367,000 contract to build four professional pickleball courts and is also sharing some basketball courts with pickleball users. But of course, this has very little to do with pickleball. It is all about pandering to vocal special interest groups while cobbling together political support and making more photo ops. A few years ago, it was cricket proponents demanding Cupertino pay for a cricket pitch. Now it's pickleball. We need public officials that act in the best interests of the city they represent and conduct a city's business with honesty, integrity, and transparency. Since Fruein, Wei, and Mohan were elected to the City Council, we have seen a distressing reduction in transparency and a general cluelessness on how financial issues face the city. The tenure of this majority council, I believe, has been messy, ineffective, and expensive, and I hope people remember that when they go to the polls in November.
Thank you, Brooke. Next, we have Rhoda Frye. Welcome, Rhoda.
Hi, good evening. First, I wanted to give a shout-out for the sheriff's non-emergency phone number. Called them today. There's a water main break at McCollum and Linda Vista, and San Jose Water is out there working to fix it. And it's quite a river going all the way down to McCollum Ranch. Anyway, speaking of McCollum Ranch, right across from McCollum Ranch, as you may know, is Linda Vista Park. And I was alarmed to find a couple things that I want to share with you. One is, in 2019, there's a property with 86 acres adjacent to Linda Vista Park that came with a proposal to build about 29 homes, and it was unanimously rejected by the City Council. The project is back now. It's 30 homes with a sports center. It's SB 330. So property had originally been sold as property that would handle three houses. It's hillside, and it's a sensitive habitat. And to my dismay, there had been some, there was, there had been roads built there and without what's called best management practices so that can cause runoff into our creeks and whatnot. Fortunately, I reported to 311. They were able to look at it. And I really hope that they can dig down a little bit more because I'm really surprised to see this level of destruction of our habitat. So that's that one. Yeah, 30 homes, hillsides at Linda Vista, entering from Linda Vista Park. The other thing that surprised me was that I see in a recent budget that our org chart has been decapitated. This is where our current, our old previous org chart. Here, you got the residents at the top, the City Council. That's you guys. You guys work for us, the residents. But when I looked at the current budget, the residents are gone. They were decapitated. So I looked at other cities, and I found that, guess what? Los Altos, residents on top. Sunnyvale, residents on top. Saratoga, residents on top. Las Gatos, residents on top. Mountain View, residents on top. Palau, same thing. Los Altos Hills, need I say more? So where are the residents? Can you please put the residents on top, where they belong? The last thing was is that we came to City Council worried about the $50 million that had been in a zero-interest checking account and had been growing for quite some time. And as it turns out, when we had talked about, when we had actually come and talked about it, that the money had, between times, we talked about it, the money had already been moved. I wish staff had been, responded with candor and told us, hey, you know, we've actually found a little place to put the money. Doesn't earn that much, but it's okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Rhoda. And we have one person requesting to speak virtually. That's San R. Welcome, San.
Good evening, City Council and Mayor Sheila. I wish to bring to your attention that during the recent Cherry Blossom Festival, there was a lot of event parking at the Cupertino Sports Center. Unlike in previous years, there was no Parks and Rec staff or sheriff looking at parking in the sports center and alerting or warning people not to do that. I request the city to please ensure that any future events conducted at Memorial Park, the city designate Parks and Rec staff or the Sheriff's Department to oversee parking and ensure there's no event parking at the sports center. It is an opportunity to bill the event organizers for that if you need to. But let's please ensure that event parking is not performed at the sports center. Perhaps it's a popularity of the Cherry Blossom Festival and the amount of crowd that it generates, but we've seen people driving in the wrong direction. As you know, the sports center is a one-way. And people driving the wrong direction, nearly causing accidents as people came around the corner, and people occupying that sports center, not allowing for patrons to park. I also want to comment on the earlier speaker that suggested that tennis courts should be converted to pickleball. I ask that we stop our attack on tennis courts. Sports are not mutually exclusive. Let's not attempt to rob Peter to pay Paul. Let's not go after our tennis courts, please. Tennis is an important sport. It is a college sport. It's a path to a college scholarship. The future is bright for kids from Cupertino who can play on these courts, who can learn, and the future is limitless. They can turn pro, they can turn college players, they can get a college scholarship. None of that would apply for pickleball. So let's not make this a tennis versus pickleball and try to take away from tennis courts. As you all know, the courts are 100% occupied. And please, let's find the locations that work from a noise perspective, and let's find ways to reduce the financial burden, such as partnering with Foot and Deanser and looking at space on the Deanser campus to be able to achieve what we need to. And lastly, I want to bring to your attention, if you are not already aware, that we had a ghastly accident on foothill and lost the precious life of a Cupertino 5th grader from Stevens Creek Elementary who was just walking back home innocently from Monica Vista Park on the sidewalk. It highlights the importance of controlling speed on Foothill Boulevard. This issue has been brought up before. I appreciate any work and priority that the city can do to take action immediately on Foothill Boulevard, such as being able to install speed radar, being able to reduce speed limits, being able to ensure more law enforcement and ticketing, particularly on weekends when we have a lot of out-of-towners trying to drive through Foothill Boulevard. Thank you for your attention to the matter.
Thank you, San. Mayor, no additional speakers for this item?
Okay. So that ends the oral comments, a portion of this agenda. Let's go to the consent calendar. Madam City Manager, have any items been pulled off the consent calendar?
No, Mayor.
No? Okay. Okay, so seeing that no items have been pulled, let's go to public comments on any of the items on the consent calendar. Is there any?
I see one request in the making.
Okay.
There are no hands raised on Zoom. So Rhoda, one speaker, Mayor Rhoda Frye.
Okay.
Sorry about that. Okay, yeah, I got distracted by that water main break today when I was out walking. It was quite fascinating to see San Jose Water out there with all the trucks and everything, but it got me late here late. Anyway, regarding the HFNF contract, I understand that they look at garbage. And I'm hoping that the staff looks into the concerns that we brought up earlier about the fees that the city is charging to ecology and then come back, that come back to us. And what's happened is that those fees have at some times reduced our garbage bills, but then are moving toward not reducing them and actually accumulating funds in the city. And so when that happens, it starts looking like a fee and starts looking at tax. Because a fee, you have to have an Because a fee, you have to have a nexus, a connection between what the fee is being charged for and what service it's, between, anyway, I'm a little tongue-tied. So, if this fee is just kind of sitting there and then money is accumulating, it really starts looking like a tax. So, I'm hoping that they can look at that and kind of contain what the fee is supposed to do and where it goes. It concerned me to see this money just accumulating and looking like a tax. So, I'm hoping that that contractor can look at that. I didn't really happen to notice that being spelled out in the contract. And the other concern I had is that our, and I brought this up before, this is in my public comment in the, or in your packets, that our garbage rates really are not competitive from a value point of view, that we do pay less than other, than some other cities for the services that we get. However, the services are not equivalent, so the value we're getting is not as good. So, I'm hoping that they can also look into that, and you'll see that I did a comparison with various cities here. And anyway, and you can see this, here I have this, I circled this today, fees or taxes, but you'll see that in your, in your notes, so I won't take your time any longer. You can read it later. Thank you.
Thank you, Rhoda. Mayor, I see no additional speakers.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? Councilmember Way?
I move approval of consent calendar number four to eight.
All right. Is there a second? Councilmember Bachau, you have your light on.
I'll second, but I wonder, can I still ask question on this?
On?
On the public comment, can I still ask question or not?
You can briefly respond to the public comment.
Oh, okay. So, the public seems to be requesting this consultant to also evaluate the fee structure that's charged under ecology or the overall solid waste charge. So, is that within the scope of this consultant's work?
I would have to look more carefully at the scope of work, so.
So, we don't know if that's something this consultant, they will be looking at procurement of solid waste discharge managers for?
Right, well, there are multiple, there are multiple contracts, the hauling contract with ecology is just one of the contracts that.
So, once they finish the study, likely we could see a comparison of fees?
The overall cost, so again, now we're getting, we're getting actually beyond what's agenda, so I will answer this and sort of, sort of ask us to move on. The overall cost of waste disposal will be one of the things that council will have an opportunity to weigh in on.
So, what, what item will be that?
That we, we will, in the future, council will be considering the disposal, its disposal contract.
That's after this consultant finished their work, right?
This consultant's work is related to that contract.
Yes, so this consultant's work will be coming to the council with the cost that this resident is concerned about.
Council will have, of course, council will have to approve any contract for disposal, for sure.
So, if the residents have concern about solid waste cost, wouldn't that be the feedback we should be providing to this consultant?
This is, this is, staff is aware that cost is one of the considerations that will go into, to the council's decision on the disposal contract.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Since we have a motion to approve the consent calendar, is there a second?
I believe Councilmember Chau seconded.
Oh, Councilmember Chau, you did second it. Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor of the consent calendar, please vote by lights.
The motion carries unanimously.
Great. Thank you. We will move to public hearings. This, number nine, is the fee schedule, which was continued from April 16th, 2024, and the recommended action is to continue it further. And Madam City Manager, did you have anything to say about that?
Thank you, Mayor Mohan. Yes, due to the staffing and resource shortage, we're not able to make this item in time for today's meeting, so we're asking council to consider postponing to the next week's meeting. So, this will be on a May 14th council meeting.
Is there a motion to approve the postponement?
Mayor, I would ask you to open the public hearing, so we can, we can open the public hearing and then continue it to the meeting on the 14th.
Okay, let's open the public hearing, and let's, let's hear public comments.
No, we, well, we don't need to take public comment, but we do, but we do need to open the public hearing, and then if you, if you wish, you can entertain a motion to continue the, the hearing.
Okay, so the public hearing is opened, and I'm looking to, for a motion to postpone this item to next week, May 14th. Councilmember Moore?
I move that we continue item nine to May 14th, 2024.
Excellent. Is there a second? Councilmember Way?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second, please vote by lights.
The motion carries unanimously.
Great. Thank you. And now, we go to item number 10, which is the legislative update. And is there a staff report, Madam City Manager?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Mohan, for introducing the item. So, we're pleased to have the legislative update coming to council. I'll just do a short intro before I turn it over to the team. We also have our lobbyist, Jason Gonzalez, available on Zoom. I believe Jason's available, we can probably see him pretty soon. He'll be part of the presentation in the coming minutes. There's Jason. So, council, remember that last year, the Legislative Review Committee was removed, and therefore, we're bringing the entire list of legislation to council for your blessing to either take a position or to have further consideration, given the landscape of where we are, and we thought that this is the perfect time to bring these legislation considerations before council for further consideration. So, with that said, I'm going to turn over to Deputy City Manager Tina Kapoor and also Astrid for walking us through today's presentation.
Thank you, City Manager Wu. Good evening, Mayor and council. Thank you for the opportunity to present today. I'm Tina Kapoor, Deputy City Manager, and with me here in the council chambers is Astrid Robles, our Senior Management Analyst in the City Manager's Office. And also joining us on Zoom today is Jason Gonzalez, our lobbyist, who'll be presenting with me today. Jason, do you want to quickly say hi before I dive in?
Yes, thank you, Tina, and good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council, Jason Gonzalez, with the lobbying firm Joey Gonzalez and Son. And just very briefly, I note that our firm has had the privilege and honor of representing your city dating back to 2022. I also would note that our relationship started with your city back in 2010, when we were retained to help secure a larger share of the property tax, recognizing your city as a known low-property tax city. So, it's a privilege to be here, and I want to compliment the management team for the excellent work for tonight's presentation. They are the ones that enable us to be successful in Sacramento. So, I'll stop there and turn it back to Tina. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. And with that, let's get into it. If you can see our screen, so we're here tonight to provide a 2024 legislative update and to discuss pending legislation relevant to Cupertino. Staff has identified three bills of interest that have the potential to impact Cupertino, and we're bringing these forward today for council direction. Staff's recommendation is that council take a support position on these bills. Jason, in a bit, will go over the details with you in just a few seconds. So, in January, staff provided an informational memo that outlined the process for the 2024 legislative session, and this memo also included the legislative priorities that stem from the council-adopted goals of public engagement and transparency, housing, transportation, sustainability and fiscal strategy, and quality of life. So, these priorities focus on the most critical city needs, and they're in front of you on the screen. These priorities also guide the advocacy work in the legislative session, as well as staff's effort in researching and identifying bills of interest. And here in front of you, this is the three-step process for the 2024 legislative session. Step one was providing an outline of this process and an overview of the 2023 legislative session. So, this was done, as I mentioned, through an informational memo on January 17th, which is also linked in the staff report for today's item. Today, we're at step two, which is to get council input on pending legislation and take positions on relevant bills. The last and final step, as you can see on the screen, will be sometime in the fall, so after the end of the legislative session, to provide an overview of significant actions that were taken this year. This process is strategically timed to coincide with key milestones in the legislative cycle. Flexibility, of course, is important, and the process can be adjusted as needed. So, all this information is available on our website at Cupertino.gov/legislation. Here's a screenshot of our website, so on this page, you can also find the bill table, which is a focused list of bills that are determined to be most relevant and impactful to Cupertino. The process for how this list is developed begins when the legislative cycle starts. So, throughout the cycle, staff tracks bills, working closely with our lobbyists and various organizations like Cal Cities and the County Office of Strategic and Intergovernmental Affairs, the entire bills of interest list, which is included with the staff report as attachment B, and this list also includes the bills that council has shared with staff. Then, working internally with the attorney's office and all departments, staff produces a focused list of high-priority bills, which you can see here on the screen. So, this work is grounded in partnerships, both inside and outside City Hall. We work closely with our partners to narrow down this list and identify high-priority bills that are updated at least once a month. And with that, I will now turn it over to our lobbyist, Jason, who will walk us through the 2024 legislative update, share some key dates in the legislative session, and details on the three bills that we're bringing forward today for council consideration. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Tina, and again, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Jason Gonzalez. It's a privilege to be here remotely this evening. Starting with the first slide, as you will note, there was 2,295 bills introduced prior to the February 16th bill introduction deadline. To put that into perspective and to also illustrate the timeliness of this meeting, the bill, you have to take language to legislative council in January. All bills have to be introduced by February 16th. Then, there's a constitutional requirement that all the bills have to be in print for 30 days. So, middle of March is the first hearing, they have, the legislature has spring recess. What we're looking at, we're left with is April, May, and June to vet 2,000, nearly 2,300 bills, a July summer recess, and they're back the month of August for the final 30 days of session leading up to sign and die August 31st. So, we really have four months ahead of us of legislative session, again, to consider the policies of nearly 2,300 bills. What we are continuing to see, as noted in your slide, is a continued focus on public safety, and I would even say a renewed focus on public safety, because the pendulum has begun to swing back towards the side of law and order, local law enforcement, district attorneys, and others. Both the Senate and the Assembly have, we have submitted a package of bills to address crime, theft, drug sales, you name it, within local communities. The Speaker of the Assembly has announced a Select Committee on Retail Theft, and all of this is overlaid with the pending California District Attorneys Association initiative effort, where they have submitted signatures that are pending verification with the Secretary of State's Office. So, public safety will continue to be in priority. There are, there's a package of bills, one of which is noted for your consideration of support later in the, in the packet. But, once the signatures from the District Attorney's Initiative qualifies, there's a strong likelihood there'll be additional negotiations from the governor, the Speaker of the Assembly, the President Pro Tem, and stakeholders to potentially strike a compromise that would go to the November ballot, because the District Attorney's Association Initiative seeks to amend Proposition 47 and 57 and increase penalties for fentanyl and retail theft and so forth. So, that's going to continue to morph, if you will, as the signatures are being verified with the Secretary of State's Office in anticipation of a November ballot, and a compromise would have to come together between now and sometime middle of June. Moving on, the budget and the continued focus on climate, and the climate and the budget kind of intertwined, because the governor's last two years of budgets have allocated about $50 billion in investment in climate change and climate resiliency. The governor, in the January budget, in an effort to address the shortfall, proposes about $6.7 billion in climate reductions, about $1.8 billion in shifts to, from other funds, and $2.9 billion in delays of expenditures, most of which are coming from what is called the greenhouse gas reduction fund. So, while there's a continued focus on the budget, I'm sorry, on climate change, the budget is being pared back on that. The good news on the climate change side is the, back in February, the Biden administration announced about $15 billion in new funding coming to California for climate resiliency, zero-emission vehicle infrastructure, about $4 billion on water, $2 billion for energy efficiency, and so forth. So, it's a kind of a mixed bag. The governor has a daunting budget deficit to address, and we are anticipating cuts to climate, but also some potential back bills coming by way of federal governors. On housing, I would say it's unfortunate, but we're continuing to see a trend in legislative efforts to circumvent local land use decision-making processes. I would argue that one size does not fit all, particularly for cities such as Cupertino, small to medium-sized cities, very different local land use decision-making than, say, Oakland or San Francisco. That said, we will continue to see affordable housing to be a top priority from the governor on down. We continue to see Surplus Land Act as kind of an overlay of affordable housing discussions, RENA, as well as HCD's increasing oversight and authority with local agencies. I would suggest that we've worked very well with HCD, and we'll continue to do so as issues continue or as the process continues to evolve, we will continue to work with your management team and the State Department of Housing and Community Development. Now for the, the big one, the budget. Unlike what Governor Newsom had seen in his first three years of record surpluses, back in January, the governor projected a roughly $38 billion budget deficit. The legislative analyst, the nonpartisan legislative analyst for both the state senate and assembly, projected a $68 billion deficit. That number has been revised of $73 billion. So, a billion here, a billion there, we're looking at a daunting state budget deficit. Just to put that in perspective, I know it seems like a lifetime ago, but Governor Wilson in 1998, the entire state general fund budget was $68 billion. So, we're looking at a projected deficit of what the state general fund was 25 plus or minus years ago. The, the good news is, the governor and legislative leadership and, and the entire legislature has begun, they've taken the deficit quite seriously, they've begun making difficult decisions. Back on April 11th, they passed AB 106, which. Back on April 11th, they passed AB 106, which accounted for about $17.3 billion of reductions in spending, some borrowing, some shifting, but it's a $17 billion reduction in the 38 to 60, or 38 to $73 billion projected deficit. That coupled with about $38 billion in rainy day funds, we see the state budget looking to be what will become a multi-year effort for the governor and legislature to close that gap. It is, it's going to be a challenge, but it will be done by June 15th, as far as the primary budget will be adopted, and then we will likely see trailer bills moving into August before the August 31st signee die. The last bullet on the, on the slide, leadership changes. We have a new, as of last July, a new speaker, really started ramping up committee assignments and changes last fall and in this past January. We also saw the election of a new president pro tem. So the Speaker, Robert Rivas, is from the Salinas area. The president pro tem, Senator Mike McGuire, is from the Hillsborough North Coast. It's the first time since the late 1990s, when we've had two leaders from Northern California. Oftentimes, you have one from the north, one from the south, or both from the south. We have both leaders, the pro tem and the speaker, from Northern California. And we're also in an election year, which is no surprise to, to anyone participating in this meeting. Of the 120 members of the legislature, all 80 assembly seats are up, and 40 of, I'm sorry, yeah, all 80 assembly seats are up, and 20 of the 40 senate seats are up in November. So we will have 35 new members post-November of this year, coupled with 37 new members from November of 2022. So after this upcoming election, we will have 72 of the 120 members having served two years or less. I would also note that, you know, your city has had the, the good fortune of having Assembly Member Lowe, and then Assembly Member Furman at one point, and Senators Cortesi, and now transferring, transferring over to Senator Becker after election, all very strong members. As you know, Assembly Member Lowe is now in the congressional seat runoff, and we will see a new assembly member. I only make the note of new representation, because it's a new opportunity to tell your story, all about the city of Cupertino, pick priorities, and advocate accordingly as the new member is elected. Just moving on to the next slide. Not a lot to add on by way of this slide. I would just fully note the compressed timeline between now and the August 31st that I previously mentioned. I would also note the timeliness of this meeting as part of your three-step process, because, as you will see from the slide, all the bills, or the majority of the bills, are still in the House of Origin. We're ahead of the June 15th budget, and the, I don't want to call it the real vetting, but the, once the bills move to the second house and closer towards the August 31st adjournment deadline, things will ramp up rather quickly. So your action this evening is much appreciated and quite timely. Perhaps the next slide? So the three bills of interest that we've worked with your management team to provide, I think, to gather policy direction from you, Madam Mayor, and members of the council. The first one's a regional effort. It's the, it's a local potential initiative process from the Bay Area Affordable Housing advocates. There's, my understanding is, and as noted, there's still a determination as to whether or not the effort will pursue a $10 billion or $20 billion affordable housing bond. I understand on May 22nd, they will need to maybe make that determination or land on a number, but as noted in the slide, it could be upwards of $2.4 billion for your region, for Santa Clara County's allocation, and obviously a worthwhile endeavor to build approximately or up to 72,000 projected new units, affordable housing units within the nine Bay Area counties. So that is recommended for a support position. Moving on, the next slide. The next bill is AB 1779 by Assembly Member Jackie Erwin out of the Thousand Oaks region. I would note that this bill is part of a package to combat retail theft. The bill seeks to remove jurisdictional limitations involving theft, grand theft, shoplifting, robbery, to allow local district attorneys to combine or work together on coordinated charges irrespective of where the crime either took place, the merchandise was recovered, and/or if there were multiple crimes within multiple jurisdictions. So it expands the ability to target what many are referring to as theft rings or repeat offenders on retail theft. Again, it's part of a broader public safety discussion, but also, I think, could have a worthwhile impact and necessary impact for coordination within the region at the local level. I would note that this bill passed the Assembly Public Safety Committee on April 9th, eight to zero, and will continue to move through the process, but it does enjoy bipartisan support. Moving on to the next bill, SB 1143 by Senator Bill Allen, Ben Allen, out of the Florence area. This legislation seeks to establish or extend producer responsibility programs for household hazardous waste and the collection and management thereof. There's a, there's a key provision in the legislation that would enable local agencies to participate in the system to seek reimbursement for disposal cost and operating the household hazardous waste programs within the community. This legislation is supported by statewide environmental, local government, Cal Cities, and labor organizations. Interestingly, it has moved through three committees in the Senate, so it was double referred to a policy committee. It passed out a Senate environmental quality on a five-to-two vote. It passed from there at a Senate judiciary, ten-to-zero, and recently, on April 29th, passed out a Senate appropriations, five-to-zero. Also, that legislation enjoys bipartisan support and seems to, will likely be moving through the Senate over to the Assembly. So with that, I will stop there and turn it back to Tina for the next slides. Again, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Jason. So, back to closing. So as you heard, staff will return to council sometime in the fall after the end of the legislative session to provide an overview of the significant actions that were taken this year. And with that, once again, here's the recommended action for tonight, and Jason is here to answer questions, and staff is also available. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina, and thank you, Ashrit. Let's take council member questions now of, of the staff. If we have any questions for Tina or for our lobbyist, Jason, this would be the time to ask. So five minutes each, and we will start with Councilmember Wei.
Thank you, May Moehan. So, Jason, from now till, till that, you know, that the legislative actions taken next time, do you expect all three bills being modified? You know, what, what, what is your outlook for modifications for these three bills?
Councilmember Wei, I would suggest, I would expect that all three bills are likely to see some amendments. Very few bills move out of the second house, and all three bills will be moving to the next house without any amendments, but I wouldn't anticipate any substantive or redirection of the policy priorities from any of the authors. And the, the first one, the Bay Area housing one, I know that's being more negotiated at the local level, but within the legislature on the latter two, I would expect the policy to remain the same, but with maybe some technical amendments.
So I think the last email we received from the League of Women Voters on the first bill we're talking about, the League is taking an observed position or a, a position to, and, and not oppose but not support until modified because of the Citizens Oversight Committee, I think. What do you think that the legislature would do? Oh, do you recommend we, we take the League's position or we support it, not opposing it? What do you think?
On the League of Women Voters, I just saw their letter late this evening. My understanding is they're requesting some oversight, and I would anticipate that will be negotiated at the local level through A-Bag and others, but I, I don't think it will change the overall intent and benefit potentially for the community.
Thank you, Jason. I will reserve my three minutes, uh, two minutes. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Fuhrer?
So just very quickly, with respect to the BAFA bond, in terms of where you would be sending a support letter, would you be sending that to the Bay Area Housing Finance Authority? To whom would you be sending it?
That question's for me. I believe the recommendation would be to send it to the Bay Area Housing Finance Authority, and I would recommend the mayor and council and management staff copy your legislators to keep them apprised as well.
Got it. And if we wanted to incorporate some of the recommendations of the League of Women Voters Bay Area, what direction would you need from us? Simply that much or something more specific?
I think simply that much would, my sense would give the management team enough to weigh in accordingly.
Great. Thank you all. Reserve the remaining four minutes.
Councilmember Chow?
So, for the affordable housing major, and if passed, that will become a property tax charge on everyone's property tax bill? Right?
Yes.
So what's the estimate for, do you have some examples of, um, let's say it's $10 billion for 2,500 square foot house? What would be the charge?
Councilmember Chow, I have not seen, and again, this is being negotiated, and I understand they have a meeting on May 22nd, the proponents, to discuss this. I have not seen a per-household estimate, so I don't have those numbers. I will be happy to get those back to your team.
So, it will eventually by, decided by the square foot of the house? Right? Is it like a school bound, I guess my question is, is it like a school bound, where the charge per house will be determined by the land, the parcel size?
That is my understanding. That's what's being considered, yes, but I will give some additional information and follow-up with some certainty, for sure, yes.
Okay, and, okay, thank you. And then additional question is, I, so AB 1779, and it's looking like it will pass. Is there any opposition for that?
Thus far, there has been some opposition from the recidivism groups and public defenders and so forth, but the legislation has received bipartisan support, so it's, it is looking like it-
Actually, I meant the other one, SB 1143, the waste management. Oh, wait, that's okay. No, I meant that one, yeah. You, you mentioned the vote for the waste management one. So that one, so there is some opposition, but not strong for the, for AB 1779?
There is some opposition, but it has not slowed down the bill and the bill's momentum thus far. It has, AB 17789 has enjoyed bipartisan support, and likewise, with SB 1143, there is some opposite, opposition.
That's okay. Thank you. I'll reserve my time for other questions.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Jason, for the update on the legislation. I've been focusing in on the, the housing bond suggestion, and I'm trying to figure out if they're just going to be looking at residential. And I've looked at the report from our Larry Stone, our tax assessor, he's got his annual report for 2023, and in that, you can just Google it and pull it up, it shows the, the mobile home assessed value, multifamily housing assessed value, single-family and condominium assessed values, and then you can get the total residential. And the reason why I'm asking about that is, I, I couldn't actually arrive at the, the $20 billion just using the residential. So I'm wondering also, is it just residential, and then what is the term of this bond? And, and I have to say, when I went through the materials, I found it to be pretty light on details. So I'm, I'm trying to see if this, if this idea, this concept works, that's my concern. So would you happen to know the answers to those two, or is that, do we need some more research?
I don't have the answers offhand, and my understanding is the May 22nd meeting is when those issues will be discussed amongst the regional agencies, so that's when those, that should have worked out.
Okay, that's, that's fine. So when I'm looking at also the same assessor's report, our office has a assessed value, which is quite a bit lower than our single-family detached. So if people are thinking that the office will, will make up the difference, we need to have some more information about that. I did put together a, a chart to see where, what, which part of the Santa Clara County would be contributing the, the most to this, and of course, it is San Jose. But that, like I said, is just for the residential portion, and my concern with mobile homes is if they would be included, needing to participate, and if there's an exemption, because there's a number of exemptions that show up in this report as well for individuals that don't have to pay the, the tax. And I, I am curious if, if, if this might be like BSEP, the Berkeley Plan, where I believe they had originally tried to only tax residential, and then it, it turned out, and the, the city attorney can correct me, but it turned out that they needed to also include the commercial portions, that they couldn't just do the square footage parcel tax just for residential. And I'm wondering if we might be walking into a situation like that. I did, I believe I saw something where they would look into the commercial properties, but what I read, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but what I read looked like we're going to start with residential and potentially move out to commercial. The other unknown that I, I don't know if anyone could find this, was how, once they sent money back to the county, would it get distributed among the cities? And, and if, if anyone has a, a solid answer on that one, I would appreciate it. And then I'll also some information about anyone's estimation about, would it be more prudent for Cupertino to create our own local fund, as opposed to using an outward bureaucracy that we're waiting for the money to get back to the county and then maybe back to us? I'd like to hear about that. Thank you.
So I had a couple of questions. I did attend the Cities Association meeting last month, and my understanding was that the funding would come from a portion of, a rate based on the assessed value of the property, not so much the, the square footage. Am I accurate, Jason, or, or is that likely to change?
I think, Madam Mayor, you're correct. It's based on assessed valuation, but again, I believe that is part of the discussion and decision-making process slated for May 22nd.
Okay. So having said that, since there's so many unknowns as of today, does it make sense for us to take a position- sense for us to take a position, knowing that it could be amended as, as the process goes on? Or are we safe in assuming that, as you said earlier, Jason, that any amendments will not be substantive? Or is that, is that a guess, or is that likely to happen?
Madam Mayor, my understanding is this effort has quite a bit of support and interest from regional, throughout the region. I did note from the League of Women Voters letter, there, there's been an adoption of a business plan, an accountability committee. So I, I think the staff's recommendation to support, I don't expect the overarching emphasis on affordable housing to change, and I think it enables the mayor, the council, and the city to be part of the ongoing discussions.
Okay, so supporting it today would not have any negative impact in case things change between now and November? Is that what you're saying?
That's what I would recommend, and I would also say there's nothing that would stop, should something go sideways, would prevent the mayor and council from changing your position, should you choose to.
Okay. Thank you. We, we'll come back later. We will have time for deliberation. So this is just asking questions of our staff as well as the, our lobbyist. Councilmember, so thank you, Jason, for now. Councilmember Moore?
One minute. I have one minute left. So it's my understanding that it is based on the assessed value, and because of Prop 13, you could foreseeably have one residence assessed at maybe $400,000, and a new family moves in next door, and they could be assessed at 2 million. And then you would take the 2 million divided by 100,000, and then if you're at the 20 billion dollar amount, which I, I'm arguing that you're not going to get to the 20 billion with the, just using the residential, but then you're going to multiply by that, and you're, you could end up with, what is that, $480 extra tax for the new family, whereas the, the people that had their home for many, many years and much lower will be paying just a fraction of that. Is that, is that correct?
That is correct, and that's just, anytime we deal with assessed valuation in Prop 13, it's an underlying system that rewards longevity of ownership. I, I don't want to digress, but I would say it's also not as equitable because city Cupertino gets less than seven cents on the dollar, whereas other communities are getting a much larger share of property taxes. So we could, Prop 13 has a few conversations we could have around this.
Vice Mayor Frue.
How would you expect a support and concept position to be received?
I don't see a downside to that. I, I think, you know, the staff recommendation of support is supporting the concept, and should the concept change, you could change your position as well. So I think it's consistent with staff's recommendation from my perspective.
Great, thanks.
Councilmember Chow.
You have about two minutes.
Okay. So I think we probably should consider support if amended, but I'll talk about that later. My question right now is, I would like to know any legislation that might change the sales tax structure, since we have been hit with the audit, whether there is any trend in changing use or utility tax. And also, any proposed housing bills would include unfunded mandates, since we are already losing revenue. And that would put limit on impact fees, that would actually means mandating the cities to subsidize for profit market rate developments. And any bills that would circumvent local land use authority, as you have mentioned, that's a continued trend. So could you comment on that? Thank you.
I think I've got them in order. On the sales tax side, there are, there's a working group amongst Cal Cities looking at sales tax, CITIS versus use tax. Senator Glaser has legislation seeking to ban sales tax agreements. Assemblymember Irwin has legislation also seeking to adjust sales tax agreements. So there's a larger conversation taking place, all separate and apart from the city's sales tax agreement discussion or, or conversations with Department of Tax and Fee Administration. So there's quite a bit on the sales tax front. On impact fees, Assemblymember Grayson has legislation, and he has for a couple of years now, trying to limit impact fees. And I believe Cal Cities, I know Cal Cities is engaged in that. And on the unfunded mandate piece, the state's much better at giving the mandate than paying for it. And, you know, as we've seen with ADUs, SB 35, and others, it's additional work with HCD, and thus far, not a lot of reimbursement, if any, that comes to mind coming out of the legislature. So there, there are additional costs without reimbursement, yes. Did I miss anything?
Bills that circumvent local, bills that circumvent local use authority, but I'm out of time. So you can-
You will get a chance to talk again.
Yeah.
Later, but, but for now, our, the council's questions to staff, we're done with that. Are there any public comments about these bills?
Yes, Mayor, I see one hand, now two hands raised virtually, and I have no request to speak in house so far. So we'll start with San R., followed by Lisa. Welcome, San.
Evening, Mayor Sheila and councilmembers. It's not clear to uninformed residents like me as to why the city is spending time during budget session or during budget season on this agenda item. We could be spending time on fee study, we could be spending time on budget, but we're spending time on this item where the city has no jurisdiction. So perhaps you could take some time to educate uninformed residents like myself that don't understand why the city is spending time on state-related agenda items. Residents can write to their state assemblymen and state senators to influence policy. Residents can write to their, to their governor. I don't understand why we're spending time on this. I'm also concerned that we have a lobbyist, and how much are we paying for this lobbyist in a time of budget deficit when we should be cutting costs? I hope the action you will take here is to inspect the cost that you're spending on this agenda item as well as this lobbyist. And how will you take steps to reduce expenses in this area where you have no jurisdiction and have no influence? Having said that, I'm alarmed that you're considering endorsing positions that might raise taxes on residents. I ask that you please take a position that is against any tax raises on residents. Residents are overtaxed, taxes coming from every direction. We just gave you resounding feedback that we want to see no taxes from the city, and you dropped that agenda item, and here we are now considering taking a position that might endorse a tax in some shape or form. I also find it concerning that this tax is inequitable, in that if you assess a tax based on the current assessed value of the property, longtime residents like the mayor are going to pay a pittance of a tax compared to newer residents that have moved into the city and are bearing an unfair burden of property taxes today, having to pay even more because their assessed value is higher. So this tax makes cost of living higher and more unaffordable for newer residents in Cupertino, while doing nothing for the longtime residents of Cupertino that occupy the DIAS and other positions such as commissions and, and so on. So please don't take any position that endorses raising taxes on your residents. Please understand and empathize with the hardships of residents that are now facing unprecedented inflation and continued unemployment in the high-tech area that is our concentrated employment zone here. And please consider cutting costs and taking no positions. I also want to remind you, the League of Women Voters sued the city, and that suit was thrown out a year ago. So please don't give them more airtime than they deserve. They've been given enough time already. This is not a topic that we should be wasting our time on. Let's spend our time on fee study, on budget, on housing element, and things that you can actually have an influence on.
Thank you, San. That is your time. Next, we have Lisa. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. So I have to say, Jason, I miss you. As a resident and someone who would attend the meetings that were held in the past, and then unfortunately, actually, I can think of another word, stopped. And so these conversations are just with staff, and to my knowledge, in that over a year, nine period, close to a year and a half, this is the first time I've seen this kind of discussion come to council, which I think is a travesty. So, that being said, Jason, I think you do a great job. I enjoyed going to the meetings and actually having time to have a more casual conversation. By casual, I mean having time to digest answers and not have to be sped through questions in a five-minute period where council members are clearly wanting answers on things, but they don't have the time to get them. So I am disappointed at what happened when the Legislative Action Committee or Review Committee, I can't remember what it's called, what was called, was disbanded. I have been saying that lately and wondering where you were. I did get a message from the Assistant City Manager answering some of my questions about that, and I'm just fresh back from vacation, so I scooted in here and got onto this agenda item, which I'm grateful for. But I really think the city is better served when there's more intimate conversations with our leaders that we elect and not solely with staff. So, that being said, keep up the good work, Jason, and anyone else who's in this process, and hopefully you're all thinking of the residents, who I will remind you are the top of the org chart, and really don't have time to converse with Jason and ask questions. So I'm battling, and I'm sorry I'm battling, but to, to the previous speaker's comments, this is important stuff. This is important for all of us residents, because we are residents of this state, not just this city. And the state screws us over continually, and I'm quite frankly tired of it. And to have anyone looking out for us is great. I also, in my last seven seconds, I'm a little concerned that we're worried about what League of Women's Voters say. We've got our own residents.
Thank you, Lisa. That is your time. Mayor, I see no additional request to speak for this item.
Okay, so that's the end of the public comments section of today's agenda. Let's bring it back to council. Let's get a motion just for discussion purposes. Councilmember Moore.
So I would suggest, if we are just going to be looking at the three items, for instance, that we make a motion that we take a support position on SB 1143. That was the household hazardous waste. And then we could take the other two items separately as well, because we might have more discussion, it sounds like, with regards to the, the housing bond. So it might go quicker if we were to break it into three parts.
Councilmember Wei.
Is that a motion?
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay. So the, if you could repeat your motion, Councilmember Moore.
My motion is that we take a support position on SB 1143, and then I have a second on that, and then we're going to take the other two items separately. And I just want to repeat something, if I may, from Cal Matters, and regarding the extended producer responsibility refers to a waste management strategy that makes the manufacturer of a product responsible for the product's entire life cycle costs, including its end-of-life costs associated with recycling or disposal. These costs have traditionally been borne by local governments and ultimately taxpayers through municipal waste disposal programs. This traditional structure results in an externality or a situation where the costs of recycling or disposal are not paid by the buyer or seller of the product, but rather by a third party such as taxpayer. So I won't read any more about that, but I definitely a strong supporter of this.
Okay, so we have a motion to accept the third Senate bill, SB 1143. We have a motion, we have a second, and the plan is to discuss the other two bills separately. So, Councilmember Chow, you had something to say?
Yeah, I, I support this bill, and I would point, get, point out, in my council activity report tonight, there was a report of the Santa Clara County Recycle Waste RWRC Committee Meeting. It's a recycle waste reduction committee meeting. There was a presentation by a group that's working on a lot of these bills on consumer-producer responsibility, and they, I included some material there that might be worth looking into. So I'm happy to support this bill.
Okay. Let's vote by lights on the motion that's on the table.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay. I suggest, if we want to talk about the two other bills separately, let's do Assembly Bill 1779, the Public Safety Bill. Councilmember Moore, you had?
Just going to make a motion that we take a position of support on AB 1779.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Hang on.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second this.
Oh, Councilmember Chow has seconded it. Okay, so a position of support on Assembly Bill 1779. We can, we have a motion and we have a second, so let's vote by lights, please.
The motion carries unanimously.
Great. Okay, so we are back to item number one, which is the BAFA, the Bay Area Affordable Housing Measure. And Councilmember Chow, you wanted to start off the discussion?
Actually, I have a-
We have five minutes each.
I have a question about what, I submitted a potential initiative to consider. I think Jason mentioned that the one that fixes Prop 47, and then, so if we want to take a position on that, what would be the process?
I'll take the question. Thank you, Councilmember Chow. So you're asking about the homeless bill that you asked?
Yeah.
So it's an Attachment B of the staff report, and I answered your email earlier. So if council would like to take a position, just wanted to remind councilmembers, each of you can take a position individually, but if you would like council altogether to take a position, we will have to come back with more, more analysis and support a recommend, recommendation on that bill.
So we would give direction to bring that back?
Correct.
If that we want to consider.
If council collectively would like to see that coming back.
Or if any other bill we would like to take position on, we can request for them to come back?
I, I would think that, so, so just kind of take a couple steps back. So these bills were selected, if you will, based on council's platform that kind of guided a selection that are applicable to Cupertino. So Tina's group has been working with Jason closely to kind of filter three bills for council's consideration. However, if council has broader interest for other bills, collectively, you can definitely direct staff to come back with additional information.
Okay. So for this particular, okay, yeah, I'm interested in any bill that will add additional burden to the city, unfunded mandate, anything that would influence our revenue, or require the city to pay or subsidize things that we wouldn't have to, so that would affect our bottom line. So if we could get more information on that kind of bills, and that would be great in a future session. And for this particular one, the Bay Area Housing Authority, I'm still confused. confused. Let me get my note. I can find it now. Anyone else can ask first. I need to get my note. I have some additional question on this bill.
Are there any comments while we... Councilmember Chow comes back later on the first affordable housing measure. I had a question, and I was just sort of taking off from what Jason said. We are approving this in concept, and there will be, likely be many changes before this becomes law. Would supporting this bill be indicative of Cupertino's strong interest in building affordable housing? And so my question is, making a statement of support, will that help us in our housing element and future housing initiatives? And I don't know the answer to that. Councilmember Fruen?
Just as a matter of response, if you look through the materials that the ABAG Executive Board has already considered on this topic since they are part of the Bay Area Housing Finance Authority, you know, even on the smaller side, if only a $10 billion bond were authorized, we would see about $1.2 billion come back to just Santa Clara County, the non-San Jose portion of it. For the sake of context, Measure A from 2016, which built almost 5,000 affordable homes exclusively, was $950 million. So it was less. So we would see considerably more as a result. If we're genuinely concerned that there isn't enough money out there to build affordable housing, then it would be a little odd for us to not support, at least in concept, something that's going to get us funding to build that affordable housing. And I'll reserve the rest of my time.
Okay, any other comments? Councilmember Moore?
So do I have the five minutes?
Yes, you do.
I'm hoping. Okay. So we also have in the packet from Jason, AB 1657 WICS. And I'd like to understand that a little bit more because that's a $10 billion bond at the state level. And to me, this is a matter of statewide significance that having the funding coming from the state makes a little more sense. More low-income housing tax credits, those types of things, I think would be beneficial. I'm going to reserve the rest of my time. That's 4:31.
Councilmember Chow?
Yeah. My question is regarding, so the county gets $1.2 billion. And likely, the majority will go to San Jose. What would be the portion that would go to Cupertino? So with all the taxes that will be charged to Cupertino residents, are we getting a fair share? I think it's a valid question. Is it better that we have our own local bond for Cupertino City only because then we make sure the taxes from our residents does go to Cupertino? I wonder, do we have any number on that?
Jason, are you available to answer some of these questions?
I am. I think that's a policy question for the mayor and council. And to Councilmember Moore's point about a statewide $10 billion bond, obviously, the ability to compete with the other 482 cities and having those funds flow down to the city of Cupertino, that could be a much more difficult endeavor. I would note on this Bay Area housing proposal, the $10 billion or $20 billion, they've set up an equity working group or equity framework. They've set up a business, while they're proposing a business plan, a regional expenditure plan to try to address proportionality. I'm not suggesting those details have been worked out, but those are questions that at least they're considering. And the last piece I would indicate is obviously, either scenario would be subject to voter approval, whether it's the city of Cupertino's specific or through the Bay Area framework.
Councilmember Wei?
Thank you, Mayor Rohan. I do believe the concept is very plausible. Whether the Cupertino or Santa Clara County gets the money, it depends on whether we build affordable housing or not. So if we're building affordable housing, I'm pretty sure the money will come to us. So I would like to make a motion to support it in concept.
Okay, so that was a motion to support the Bay Area Affordable Housing Measure in concept.
So I would second the motion, but I'd like to add a friendly amendment that we include a request for strong return-to-source provisions and a stronger public oversight of the bond as per the League of Women Voters' Bay Area letter of April the 15th, 2024, to the ABAG Executive Board.
I'll accept the friendly amendment.
Okay, so we have a motion and we... Oh, Councilmember Moore?
I'd like to make a substitute motion that we take a watch position on this item until we find out more information. And I'm going to go over to the overhead really quick. So since there are organizations like League of Women Voters who are looking at this, this is information from the Santa Clara County Tax Assessor's Report, page 44. And I added up for mobile homes, which I don't know if we would even be including it, multifamily housing, single-family housing and condominiums total value, did the $24 per $100,000. And I ended up with $108 million. That's for the one year. And then I multiplied that out by the 20... By 20 years. I don't happen to know how long this bond is going to last for. So that's how I arrived at the $2 billion. So if people would check my math, I would appreciate it. So we're supposed to... The reason that's significant is we're supposed to be getting this 2.4 plus the 2.1 billion coming back to the county. So that would be a 4.4 billion. So I'd like to have that verified. We should have some analysis on that. This is also what I was talking about with regards to office. So see this large discrepancy between the single-family detached and the office property value. So I think if people are thinking that the office or the commercial part will make up for the single-family detached contribution, it's really not, and that's kind of surprising. And that goes back to where the burden is being placed, which is really on the, primarily the single-family homeowner. Okay, thank you.
I had a question about in the discussions that I heard a few weeks ago from my Cities Association. And Vice Mayor Fruen, or maybe Jason, you can set me straight on this. The San Jose portion was sort of kept separate from the overall funding that was going to come into the state. So in other words, you know, one of the fears that many people have, including me, is when the state is apportioning monies, it sort of almost automatically tends to gravitate to cities with a larger population, the bigger cities. And we sort of tend to get forgotten in the mix. I thought by separating San Jose out from all the other Bay Area cities, we would stand, we would have a better chance of maximizing the revenues from this bond. Jason, I'll go to you first. Does that make sense? Or is that accurate?
Madam Mayor, I think that is a fairly safe assumption that closer the dollars stay to the local region, the more control you would have and more input you would have on availability of those dollars. Statewide bonds are getting very competitive and are very difficult for regional distribution. The other piece, I think to reiterate your point, Madam Mayor, is, and it's noted in the League of Women Voters' letter, and they indicated they were quite pleased with the development of the Bay Area Financing Agency Business Plan, a regional expenditure plan, and most especially the equity framework. So those are discussions to ensure equitable distribution of those funds should the voters pass the initiative.
Okay, and I think there was also something that said we would get 80% of the revenues generated in the city. Yeah, so revenues generated, 80% of the revenues generated from a city would come back to the city. No? Is, am I wrong? Councilmember Fruen?
So my recollection is that it is 80% back to the individual counties. So that's their return-to-source provision, right? 20% would remain with BAFFA itself for regional projects. Right?
Okay. Okay, so I was mistaken in thinking 80% of the revenues generated from Cupertino would come back to Cupertino.
That depends on a stronger return-to-source for individual cities, which is why I included that in the friendly amendment. Frankly, it is something that is basically already covered inside the equity framework. Right? And that is a matter of ongoing negotiation. If you were to look at what the ABAG Executive Board passed a couple of weeks ago, this resolution is relatively small. It is the beginning of this process, so there is a lot of work left to be done. And I think engaging at this stage is a good one if we want to see that our voice is heard in the way that we want to.
Okay. Thank you. And Councilmember Moore?
Thank you. So I don't know if anyone can answer this. This would be potentially to the cities within Santa Clara County, excluding San Jose. And as you saw, I couldn't come up with the $2 billion. I came up with half that much for the whole county. But if they're able to, at the $24 level, actually make that happen, each, if I take, if I take that $2 billion and I divide it by the, you've got the unincorporated parts of the county, divide it by 15, I end up with... And then take Cupertino's $760,000 per unit, which we had at the veranda. It's probably going to be going up as time goes on. I'm only ending up with 175 units. And if that has a 20-year horizon, we're supposed to be building about 1,900 very low and low-income units within the next eight years. And I'm really not sure with having our taxpayer dollars going out to the bureaucracy and then hoping that there's going to be rerouting back to Cupertino. I'm concerned about that if there isn't a better way that we can manage that. And I would like to have some analysis like what we recently saw with regards to the sales tax and transient occupancy tax and have some guidance for that before we go into show the support because I'm seeing a lot of potential issues where we might actually be able to do a better job locally through a local square footage parcel tax, some other means that would also include the commercial portion of the city as well. There might be other routes to help with this.
Okay, Councilmember Chow?
Yeah. In principle, I think affordable housing fund going anywhere, built anywhere is good. However, the city does have the obligation to fulfill our housing element. Therefore, I care how much actually comes to Cupertino. I'm unclear on this proposed measure that if it were like Measure A, it's by application, right? It doesn't guarantee a certain percentage comes to the city. And is that, how is this going to be? Is it by population, by city? Or if it's equity plan, then that means likely Cupertino are not going to get a lot because we are usually considered high resource, therefore getting less with equity. What would that be? Thank you.
Councilmember Wei? One minute, please.
Jason, is Jason still here? Or not?
Jason, can you respond to Councilmember Chow's question?
Yes, thank you. I understand the concerns of equitable distribution. I know that's been part of the conversations. Admittedly, they're taking place at the local level, far removed from Sacramento where I'm at. But again, my understanding is those are part of the upcoming discussions for the May 22 authority meeting. So those are details still being contemplated, is my understanding.
My main question, is this by allocation? Or is it going to by application? Like someone needs to apply to get the portion? Or does each city get some allocation of the fund?
My understanding is those details have not been vetted thus far. Don't know at this point.
I'll second Councilmember Moore's substitute motion then because we, a lot of things are still in the air. I'm not sure. And also mainly, I don't know how much each household would like to see extra in their tax bill. I would like to have that number to at least have some idea. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have a substitute motion and a second. Councilmember Wei? Oh, so, okay. Let me go with Vice Mayor Fruen. Yeah, just light on first.
Yeah, so I just offer that, you know, by adopting only a watch position, we're basically ceding the opportunity to get a seat at the table and engage in this conversation. If we take a supporting concept position, then we are already in the conversation, and we can try to advocate for our interest.
Councilmember Wei?
So the concept of getting money for affordable housing is always good. And I do see the details that in Councilmember Vice Mayor Fruen's a friendly amendment that gets on the table to talk about equity. And I really want to say this is separate from our city wants to have our own affordable housing tax. That, we're going to have to pay for the ballot. We have to get... That is not an easy conversation. We even talk about, and you know, when we said we want to do our own tax. So I think these are two separate issues. We're looking at a statewide ballot right now. And we're not, you know, it's really a... In my concept, any money that goes to affordable housing, whether it's in Cupertino or anywhere, is good for our state. It really increase the affordable housing affordability, and it's really economically and also equitably, it's really good. And I really want to emphasize, if we want part of the money, we build affordable housing, and we will get the money. So I really like Vice Mayor Fruen's friendly amendment that get us, support the concept, but get us on the table to talk about equity, to cover details. So I do believe that in concept, this is a good bill. We are doing statewide affordable housing money, which is much, much needed statewide. And I really believe that we should support the concept wholeheartedly and work out the details. And we can always, like Jason said, we can always change our mind if the details still doesn't work to what our expectations are.
Thank you. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you. So we have already been working on our housing element, and we have policies and zoning changes in the works in order to help the developers. We are in an economic downturn, and we need to be mindful about that. I don't feel that this bond is ready to be vetted at this time. I feel like it's come to us a little bit too early in the process in that we need to wait for the League of Women Voters and other entities to weigh in and make it better. But right now, it really looks like we're going to be hurting our newest homeowners who are struggling to be here, and they're going to be bearing an unfair burden. So I cannot support this bond at this time. And I'm... So I cannot support, uh, this, this bond at this time and I'm, and I continue to prefer that we have a watch. Thank you.
I had a question. Can we, uh, support, uh, the, the concept with the caveat that, uh, we are waiting and watching for details? Uh, Vice Mayor Fruen?
So that, that sounds indistinguishable from the idea that if we don't like the details that emerge, that we would simply change our position?
Yes.
Yeah.
Do I still have time?
We'll give you one minute. Yeah, you're out of time, but we'll give you a minute.
Okay. So I don't quite understand if we, uh, do a watch position versus no position at all, right? If we send a watch position letter and here are the reasons we are watching, wouldn't we still be engaging in the conversation? And then also it's a stronger push of we want you to address all these issues before we, uh, would consider another position, right? Wouldn't that be better than supporting concept, but we have these concerns, but then it, it seems to be weaker? So what does Jason think?
Councilmember Chow, I actually think a support with the concerns expressed, he puts you at the table. I agree with, I believe was the Vice Mayor that said it, it indicates you're supportive of affordable housing, you supported the stated goal and your desire to work out some of the, of the details, most notably equity and, and cost per resident. So I, I think the support, um, and outlining your concerns makes sense. To stay engaged in the conversation.
Okay, Councilmember Wei?
So very briefly, if I understand Councilmember Moore's concern, um, clearly, um, Councilmember Moore seems to not wanting to have this tax because it's not equitable for, uh, because of Prop. 13. So whether the details work or not, it doesn't look like, um, that's her position. That's just my feeling and, and I want to reinforce that affordable housing bond is needed statewide. And we continue to say we don't have money to build affordable housing. We want the state to give us money. Now the state is going to get billions of dollars and give us money to build affordable housing. I do think the concept is very, very good.
Councilmember Moore?
Um, thank you. Um, uh, so I prefer to, um, speak my opinions myself rather than have them be paraphrased. Uh, so I am in, in support of having funding available for affordable housing. That's what we need to do. That's always what we've needed to do. Um, if we want to have affordable housing, it needs to have the money to, behind it so that it can actually happen. And that's been one of the problems for why it hasn't been happening here. Um, and especially when we have a price tag of seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Um, so, and not only is, is there the issue with equity for how this money is going to be redistributed and whether or not Cupertino, Cupertino will be getting our fair share. When you put your money into a bureaucracy, a large bureaucracy, and then have it funnelled back down to yourself, you're losing funds in that, in that process. And there's also percentages for how much of that money will actually go towards building. There were other things that they were trying to do with the, with the funds as well, um, trying to retain, uh, current, um, current affordable units. That is a, that is a very challenging thing to do in Cupertino. When a BMR unit can be, when it's at the end of its term, it can then be converted over to an, a market rate unit and that, um, property owner is going to make a, a lot more money on it. So, and you know, I really appreciate the idea of having the funding. I think we probably need this analysis locally that, to find out if we were to do our own funding that, that we would actually end up doing better for our affordable developers than using this system that's being suggested.
Okay, I think we've all run out of minutes. Uh, so, uh, let's try and wrap up this. Uh, we, we had a motion, we had a substitute motion, am I right? Vice Mayor Fruen, did you have a motion?
No, I offered a, a friendly amendment to what was the original motion made by Councilmember Wei. The substitute motion as presently cast is to adopt a watch position.
Okay, so let's vote on the substitute motion, which is to, um, watch, uh, this bill. And then we'll take it from there. Let's vote by lights, please.
The substitute motion bails Chow and Moore voting yes.
Okay, so let's get back to, uh, Councilmember Chow, your light is on.
So I, for, so for this, so we are voting on the, this supporting concept position, right?
Yes.
So I think I support this in concept that we do need affordable housing fund. But when the state had ninety billion dollars surplus a couple, three years ago, they didn't put money in affordable housing. They had like one billion dollars statewide for affordable housing. And when they, we had sixty billion dollars, they, they didn't put money. And now this is, they are now giving us money. I think this was, that's not mistaken that. The state is now giving us ten or twenty billion. We are deciding whether to tax our own residents on that. So I would support that in concept, um, for now, but I would very, I have very con- I would really like to see how much our residents are going to be charged by this, uh, later.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember. We did talk about, uh, I, waiting for all the details to work themselves out. But Councilmember Fruen?
Yeah, I'd just point out that all the money from the state is our taxes, so I don't really see a whole lot of relevance to the comment. Taxes are the price of civilization. Oliver Wendell Holmes. This is, this is how we do things. If we want to be able to control it, this is all a regional bond, right? This is within the nine counties of, of the A-BAG area. This is money that we get to keep and we get to earmark for this purpose. It's not something the state's going to get to raid or reprogram in some other way.
Councilmember Wei? No, I, I don't think so. I'm not.
Can I propose a, a friendly amendment?
Yes, there is a friendly amendment on the table.
There was two, uh, strong oversight provisioning and strong return to source provisioning, right?
Uh, Councilmember Fruen, Vice Mayor Fruen, could you re- restate your friendly amendment, please?
It was to support the Bay Area Housing Finance Authority Bond in Concept, which was the original motion made by Councilmember Wei. And to do so with strong return to source provisions and, uh, stronger public oversight of the bond as per the League of Women Voters' Bay Area Letter of April the fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, to the A-BAG Executive Board.
So I'd like to propose a friendly amendment to be equitable between residential and commercial properties?
We have a friendly amendment.
Are we out of order? And we already have a motion and friendly amendment?
We have a motion and we have a friendly amendment.
I can propose an amendment to see if the motion maker-
An amendment to an amendment?
So my, 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 my understanding of the proposed measure is it's an ad valorem tax that would be assessed on val- on, on assessed valuation of pro- of property.
Right.
But then I thought the commercial and residential might be treated differently and we don't know that right now.
That's, that, it's not my understanding of what's been proposed.
So, so what's proposed now they are being treated?
My understanding is it's an ad valorem tax that, tax, that's, that's the assessed value of, of, of all property.
So that would apply to all properties?
But the detail, the details of this have not been worked out, uh, uh, you know, in any significant way. And so that, 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 um, that, that reservation would be the most persuasive reason to vote against this motion, um, because there are a lot of details to be worked out.
But I mean, from the understanding we have right now, commercial and the residential, they are not separating them.
That, that's my understanding based on, on what information is available.
But then in our supporting concept letter, if it's that, that's not worked out, in our support to concept, supporting concept letter, we could include that we favor a solution since they had, especially since it's not worked out, we can say we favor one that's equitable between residential and commercial, right? Then that makes sense to include that.
If that's, if, if, yeah, I think if that's something that would be in question, we would, we could include that.
Okay, great. So that's my friendly amendment to the current motion on the table to consider including, um, that we would prefer an equitable, um, tax between residential and commercial properties.
Since we do have a friendly amendment, uh, uh, Vice Mayor Fruen, would, would you accept Councilmember Chow's?
Mayor, point of order. I, I believe this is Council, uh, Councilmember Wei's motion that's on the table?
Oh, right.
So, so I, I think it would be up to her whether she accepts the friendly amendment.
Okay, so there's a friendly amendment that Vice Mayor Fruen has proposed.
It was a friendly amendment to Councilmember Wei's motion. So the movement and the second are, need to accept it. So, so, but, but I, I think in the first instance, it's, it's, it would be Councilmember Wei's decision as to whether to accept the friendly amendment.
The friendly amendment of Vice Mayor Fruen or, or Councilmember Chow?
Of the main motion.
The main motion was made by Councilmember Wei to, 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 to adopt a, a supporting concept position.
Yeah.
Um, and then the, 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 uh, Vice Mayor Fruen made a friendly amendment, which was accepted by Councilmember Wei. Uh, Councilmember Chow is approving a second friendly amendment. And so the, the question is, it should be posed to Councilmember Wei as to whether she accepts Councilmember Chow's friendly amendment.
Okay, all right. Councilmember Wei, do you accept, uh, the changes proposed by Councilmember Chow?
I do apologize. Can you repeat your friendly amendment?
Oh, since the, we don't know currently whether commercial, residential will be treated equitably. So the amendment is that we would like it, the residential, equitable treatment between residential and the commercial properties. Because it could be possible, they, they only tax residential property, but not commercial property.
I'm going to kick this back to Vice Mayor Fruen, who has more legal, because if we, Vice Mayor Fruen, I, I'm going to let, let you put this into a concept that I can understand.
Can I make a quick, uh, comment? Can we incorporate, uh, can we use the word changes to sort of encapsulate all the, the details that we're talking about that, uh, can, things could change?
Can I try and?
And so we are going to watch on the, on the details, but approve it in concept?
Uh, okay, so let's, let's, let's do this. Let's, I can try and explain. We have, I made a motion and accept friendly amendment from Vice Mayor Fruen. And in his motion, it, it is a, it is, there's room for us to get in there and get our opinions and we can still say we don't like it, we can not do it. I am very, I'm satisfied with what Councilmember Fruen's, um, friendly amendment is. And there are a lot of details to work out. This is one of the details. So I do think Vice Mayor Fruen, your friendly amendment could, it, it sort of encompasses everything that could be amended and we can always say if not sus- our satisfaction, we can say, no, we're not going to support it, right? So we supported the concept, that's what my original is, but you added to the League of Women Voters plus the, uh, equitable part in there. So I am happy with your friendly amendment, not as specific as Councilmember Chow's second friendly amendment. I think leaving it open for us to get in there and really work out the details with the League, with the A-BAG, uh, I, I'm pretty happy with that. What, so I, I would tend not to accept a second friendly amendment.
Just to make a comment on, uh, Councilmember Chow's opinions, I, I don't think that, um, the friendly amendment or proposed by Vice Mayor Fruen excludes what you're saying.
It doesn't exclude, but however, since we are getting in the conversation, they are trying to form the plan, right? And then they could adopt a virgin, once it's adopted, we can change it. And then the virgin could be, we charge all the single-family homes, but we leave all the communal, commercial property mixed use, all of these don't need to pay anything, but only the single-family homeowners have to pay tax. And are we okay with that? All I'm trying to say is we should be equitable in this kind of tax, whether whatever land use, should all pay tax because big commercial uses also require affordable housing. So there is a need to support affordable housing for every property type. That's because especially since we are entering into the conversation, they could go either way. And the reason we are doing support, uh, in concept is to be able to influence them. So that's what I'm trying, do you understand now?
Just, just, just a point of order, excuse me. Uh, so just to, just to clarify, just for, for the benefit of the clerk, I, I, my understanding is that Councilmember Wei did not accept the friendly amendment, uh, from, from Councilmember Chow. So I believe we do have a motion, um, on the table.
Couldn't I ask whether Councilmember Wei not supporting is you don't understand or is you don't support the equitable distribution?
I think, I think, I think Councilmember Wei explained her reasons, but I mean, it would be up to the mayor to, to recognize you or, or her.
Okay, so we, we have a, a motion, uh, and Councilmember Wei, yours was the original motion. If you could restate it, please, for the clerk.
I think Vice Mayor Mohan stated, uh, already, Vice Mayor Fruen already stated, uh, one time already. And I want to emphasize more that this is covers what Councilmember Chow's concern is. Everything is open to, for us to amend. So I am not going to accept a complete, a specific amendment. I think our second friendly amendment, uh, is too specific. So I, I would like to stick to my original.
Okay.
Motion with a friendly amendment from Vice Mayor Fruen.
Okay. Vice Mayor Fruen, did you have one last comment? Okay, so let, let's vote on, uh, with, with lights on, on, on the motion, which is to accept in concept and we all know what it is.
The substitute motion as amended by Fruen carried with Moore voting no.
Great.
Just a, a point of order and clarification, I believe that that was actually the original motion with a, a friendly amendment for me.
The main motion, you're correct. Thank you.
Okay. Are we good? Madam City Clerk? We're okay?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
The main motion, not the substitute motion.
Okay. So, uh, that ends the discussion on item number ten, which is the legislative update. Thank you, staff, for the presentation. Thank you, Madam City Manager. I think that we are getting to the end of, uh, our agenda. Uh, City, City Manager Report?
Thank you, Mayor. We actually have a video ready for, um, Council members of the community, understanding that there has been a new practice to put informational memo on the website. So staff went ahead and prepared in a video that's been published on the website. We would like to share that with you and also members of public so we can walk you through how this new process works. Video, can you play that? Thank you.
Let's talk City Council informational memos. Exciting, right? City Council informational memos are memos sent by the city manager to the mayor and city council that don't appear on council meeting agendas. While that may not sound exciting, these memos are a great way for you to stay up to date on what's happening in Cupertino. And now we've made them easy for you to access. Check out Cupertino.gov/memos or simply go to the city webpage at Cupertino.gov. Find our city in the blue bar and under the City Council header, click Council Informational Memos to view memos for past and upcoming city council meetings. You can even sign up to receive notifications and newsletters for specific topics and issues that are most important to you. Stay connected by going to Cupertino.gov/memos.
Okay, so now?
I'm glad everyone enjoyed it, so did we. Thank you, video, great job.
Okay, so it's crystal clear what informational items mean? All right. We still have one item, future agenda items. Is there anything that we need to discuss? Is there anything that we need to discuss there? Or we do get a quarterly update from City Manager. When is the next one due, Madam City Manager?
It's quarterly, so I believe we came to council in March, so it should be coming back around June, July timeframe.
Okay, so that's with the existing future agenda items. Did we want to add any? Councilmember Chow?
Yeah, I think the community members has brought up a few times with the city's increase in headcount. So I think we really should look in deeper about what our, I think we should review that. So I hope that there is a session where you have information on that and the study session about our headcount. Because there could be some full-time, some part-time numbers, maybe people didn't understand those numbers, and some are positions not filled, some seems complicated, so maybe a discussion on that would be valuable, not just a memo would be great also. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so two councilmembers have to support this and before it gets on the future agenda list. Councilmember Moore?
I I'll support that, and I would like to add something, and and I I sent the city attorney an email about this earlier. Well, I do have a question about the the organizational chart, missing the the citizens of Cupertino on the top. I would, my preference is that it return to how it had been. And I did write the the city attorney about the movement of the treasurer off of the organizational chart into a different location. I think that needs to be addressed, but also when we are ratifying, we're calling it ratifying our accounts payable, it's referring to a an older resolution from the 80s, and that resolution states that the the city council appoints the treasurer. And I because they're including that resolution reference in the staff report that we're receiving for the accounts payable, I I think we need to perhaps look at that and then also perhaps look at what the city of Danville is doing for their acceptance of account payable. Accounts payable, it's more of just to they're receiving them, and then they leave the ratification part up to their ACFR. Because when we're receiving these accounts payable, we're we're not auditing them. We don't have any way to check in if it's if what we're receiving is accurate or not. So we're really just receiving the report. So anyway, that could be something that's added to a future agenda to straighten some of those details out. I think we maybe need a new resolution.
So if I if I understand that correctly, you're you would be asking us to look at revising the treasurer function resolution to?
To to see if it's if it's if it's really what we're doing.
Right, well, it is, it's forty, as you point out, it's 40 years old, right? So, yeah.
Yes, it might need an update.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's one agenda item that Councilmember Chow proposed, which is to look at the headcount and?
And I think I just need a second for Councilmember Moore's.
I'll second that.
Sudden me, uh?
So I'll second Councilmembers.
So if I hear, if I get correctly, there's one from Councilmember Chow asking for the staff headcount, just kind of a prelude, the budget study session will be a perfect time, and that's scheduled for the 21st, but we'll definitely take that into consideration. And also a second item from Councilmember Moore, second by Councilmember Chow on the treasurer's function and possibility to revise it, and also ratifying APs.
And through the mayor, the if we could take a look at the organizational chart, the citizens' question and the position of the treasurer, because there's some little confusion because the municipal code says that the the basically the treasurer and the city attorney will, I'm going to have to paraphrase it, like equally serve the council and the manager, and that's a little confusing when I look at the org chart to how how you would even show that on the chart, considering that you appoint the Director of Administrative Services. So it any kind of assistance on that would be appreciated.
Is there a second on that request?
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you.
And one more proposal, actually, it was from the last item that I was going to propose is, I think I mentioned that there are some bills, whether we can influence or not, they will impact our bottom line. The anything that has unfounded mandates, anything that will limit the impact fees or any fees the city charge, that I would like to have at least some discussion on that and whether we should take a position or not. So if we can get an update on those bills that affect the city's finance or bills that circumvent local then then use authority, which I think Jason didn't have time to main respond to. So if we can have another set legislative update on these bills that affect the city bottom line and circumvent our authority.
Yeah, Councilmember Moore?
Through the mayor, given our schedule, it looks like our last meeting before our break is July 16th, and it's my understanding that our schedule is going to be, it's it's not bad tonight, but it's going to get really, really hectic. I don't know when we would be able to get back to this unless it would be right at the 11th hour in looking at September for when we would see it. Do you can you see that it would actually be able to get back on the agenda from what you're what you have lined up?
Councilmember Moore, you read my mind. So we have the budget, housing element, and zoning ordinance. We have Vision Zero, we have Lawrence Mitty. My list can go on, and and before you take a break before August. We can always start at 4:30 or 3 o'clock, extend the council meeting to include all those items. I understand that it might impact some of your work schedule. So if we were to start at 6:45 from the next meeting until the last meeting in July, the chances of fitting this information, also just having staff coordinating with Jason to have the bills come back, we'll try, we'll definitely try, but it will be difficult.
Through the mayor, is it all possible we could just receive Gonzalez and Sons' next reports, because they probably are producing these pretty regularly throughout the legislative season?
So based on the schedule, staff, we'll come back in September, once the legislation has taken a more affirmative position on these bills. So we'll come back and provide a a more overview of what happened. It could be either, I think we're looking at mid to late September. Yeah, I'm seeing a head, not frontina. It will not be a first meeting in September, probably towards mid or late September.
Okay, through the mayor, I should probably clarify, I was thinking more in terms of just a memo we could study on our own, just to the to the council that we could, as opposed to looking for an agenda item.
Councilmember Way?
So if I read the package clearly, the all the bills are in there for us to study already, and then maybe Councilmember Chow, you can point out a few as a, can you email a few that you really want our consultant to study off the agenda? I mean, not, I mean, you can email, always email Pamela and Tina, right?
Through the mayor?
Yeah.
So I'm wondering, can we request a meeting with the, oh, it's turned on, right? Is it, oh, so is it possible that maybe I can have a meeting with the consultant? Because I would like some more interactive conversation with them, maybe just for my information. I know maybe we don't have time to take positions.
Yeah, I think that's that's probably a conversation you should have with the city manager, since where we are at this point, I think we're straying from future agenda items.
Oh, no, I mean, in more information about those bills that I'm concerned with.
No, I understand the question. I think if you if you'd like to have, if you if you'd like to, I think you could probably speak to Pamela about facilitating that.
Oh, facilitating the meeting? Yeah, that's why I'm wondering. So is that included in their contract?
It's not.
It's not?
Yeah.
We will have, so the bills are available on the website, on the city website, but I think as suggested, if there are particular bills that's not on the list, understanding, I think Jason mentioned, there's over 2,000 bills that's been circulating right now. I just don't think that we have the manpower to provide analysis or even just to kind of take any position on all of the bills. I believe that council has provided direction, but more than happy to get more information that's not on the website if there's an interest. And the bills, as we mentioned, and I'm I'm going to take myself back, because I know I'm straying away, the item that we suggested were based on the platform that council has adopted some time ago. But if there are particular interests, to have individual meetings with Jason Gonzalez is not part of the scope.
All right, seeing no other discussion, we have reached the end of our agenda, and this meeting is adjourned.